The following program is sponsored by The Greed. He leads Radio Shack Dealer, 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, July 27, 2023.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our fallen heavens, if you come before me this night, we give thanks, Father, for this opportunity we have to be here for this beautiful community in which we live and for these people that serve. We ask thy blessing to be upon them and upon all of us. With your rest, we will enjoy this beautiful summertime, and we say these things humbly in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
I will have the roll call say.
Mayor Robertson.
President.
Councilman Trask.
Here.
Councilman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Elliott.
Here.
Councilman Alber.
President.
Councilwoman Williams Harper.
Here.
City Clerk Lee.
Here.
City Treasurer, HR Director Trask, is absent tonight. City HR Mr. Hoon. City Public Works Director Craig Craft. City Fire Chief Stork is absent tonight. City Engineer Alford. City Police Chief Hemroyd is absent tonight. City Building Official Leader Sut. City Municipal Court Judge Coster. Is on my zoom. City Accountant Clerk Ramirez.
Here.
And that is all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item two, public comment, where we will entertain any public comments with reference to any of the agenda items listed in tonight's agenda. If you have general comments not treated on tonight's agenda, please keep those till the end. Otherwise, please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. We'll open it up at the top.
Would you help one of us mail them?
Okay.
Regarding ordinance 751, bill number 2023-05, I am unable to attend the Ely City Council meeting on July 1st, 2023 as I have a prayer commitment to help you to get this out of my pipe, so I wanted to communicate my thoughts regarding this ordinance. As I have mentioned previously, I believe this ordinance is important to the growth of the economy in the city of Ely in White High County. We all want new businesses and services to come to the area. I have heard complaints about city and county officials in conjunction with established businesses stopping certain businesses from coming to town. The truth is, what is stopping some businesses from coming to town is a lack of population. We need more industry to bring more people permanently to our area. Tourism is one of those industries that is bringing more people and therefore more permanent jobs to our community. I appreciate the tour record and those businesses, business persons within the community that have worked hard to build our tourism as an industry. They have accomplished some great success. More hotel rooms will allow this momentum to continue. The ordinance is not all about limiting a specific business from coming into our community. It is about helping to build the tourism industry and consequently build the population, which will encourage long-term growth within all sectors of our community. There are exciting things happening in Ely. We have seen a new gym and sandwich shop open within the last few months. Councilman Trask is getting ready to open his corner market soon. Specifically, there are companies that are willing to build the services that Pine West is proposing to build in the community, even with this ordinance in place. The Woiden family is willing to invest in a casino, which includes hotel rooms. Ridley's just put in a new Beans and Roost coffee house. Buildinggate Patrol Land is putting in a new convenience store. Our Place is expanding their convenience stores and fueling operations. I think this ordinance is in the best long-term interest for the continued capability for new businesses to open and succeed as tourism contributes to population growth in the city of Ely in White High County. Thank you for your time, Ryan Reed.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
My name is Sandy Marino, and I'm here in regards to the ordinance 51, bill number 2023-05. I think you guys really need to rethink that ordinance. The way I read it now, if someone were to come in and build a 40-room hotel, they're allowed to put as many slot machines as they want. Can they go back to putting in 100 like they originally wanted to? Or can they put in 200? And do you really need another 40-room hotel here? Did anyone else notice that during the Fourth of July holiday, the 4-7s didn't even appear to be open? This is the one located behind the jailhouse? It wasn't even open. There were two vehicles there, and maybe it looked like someone was working on it. And I don't know the reason why this wasn't available to the public, but there were vehicles there. But at that time, during the holiday weekend, that hotel did not appear to be open, and there were vacancy signs all up and down Altman. So if you're really concerned about your existing businesses, why are you going to force another 40-room motel into the town when you already have vacancies up and down the road? And I think there's another way around this. I think you need more restaurants. We're kind of shy in that area now. I think if you could set it up to where a restaurant could come in and maybe still have some slot machines, I think that's the way to go. But forcing a 40-room motel into a residential neighborhood, and they're allowed to have as many slot machines as they want, I think that's kind of defeating the purpose of the opposition. They're saying this will kill them. Originally, it was, if you put this project in, it will kill Nevada. It will kill the prospect. And then when you first put in this ordinance, reading about having to have 40 rooms in a motel, I overheard some council members speaking with the lady from Nevada, and they were going, oh, if they put a motel there, will it hurt you? Will it take business away from you, you know, to stop them before they get you? Oh, no, we turn people away. So which is it? You know, they were complaining that this business would put them out of business the whole time, knowing they had a 90-room hotel proposed already. So it's kind of hard to know what to believe is true from what they're saying. And I think you just need to take more time and maybe really think about the wording on it a little better. Because once you let a 40-room motel in, they can put as many slot machines as they want the way you have it working out. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. For the record, I'm Caroline Mappertage, and I'm here to invite you to welcome the Working for Cancer writers and runners that will be in town. They come every year. It's the All-American Foundation, and they'll be staying the overnight at the St. Bartholomew's Church. And we're having a dinner at 6 o'clock at the church. And our very own BJ, Alber, is our guest speaker because he's done it before, and he becomes a rock star that night. They are so inspired. So I just wanted to let you know, if you see the runners and bikers to welcome them, and you're all welcome. The mayor and his husband have been every year to the dinner, and we appreciate that. And then my last little bit is I do want to support ordinance 751. We need lodging. I have data, not hearsay. And we're really trying hard to diversify our economy, and that's how we're doing it, is through our visitors and tourists. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Burton.
Okay. Sorry, Carrie.
You're good.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm Burton Hilton. I would like to speak in regards to Agenda Item B8. I'm just shaking my head at this issue. Here we are, a month after it seemed to be settled by the council. Someone wants to open up a gas station? Open one up. Someone wants to open up a restaurant? Open one up. Someone wants to open up a bar? Open one up. Someone wants to have more than 16 slots? Then here are the rules. The company pushing for this seemingly is only interested in bending the city over and seeing how much the city will pay. They sure don't seem interested in building a restaurant or a gas station. They only want slots, 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 slots. The restaurant room is only seen so only as they actually can get their slots. How many restaurants have you been into with 40 slots in the actual restaurant? The Business Impact Statement shows 92% in favor of keeping the river environment in ordinance. How does a slot parlor benefit the city? I'm sure not aware of any substantial benefits. Why hasn't a Terrible Representative been in any of the proceedings? They had 176 gas stations with no slot partners. They only have six slot partners overall, 3.4% for their total. They obviously don't need them to be successful. Other developments are happening in the community without demands on the city like this. I urge you to reject the proposed material changes to the ordinance and approve the second reading of the ordinance, 9.1 as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Pintar, 1417 Mill Street, and New Business Item Number 6, Performance Evaluation for Clerk Lee. Having been present at your last meeting and witnessing the appalling treatment the City Treasurer, HR Trask, was subjected to, I would again like to take the opportunity to remind this council what valuable assets and appointed employees you have selected to fill these positions are, not only to the council, but also to the residents of the city of Ely. I appreciate the complimentary response I've received when I asked questions from Clerk Lee. That said, budgeted or unbudgeted, she should be given the same raise as Mrs. Trask as further acknowledgement of the job well done in representing us all. Now, on the New Business Items 2 through 5, Councilman Alber's resignation from multiple boards. Your last meeting was nothing less than disappointing to see the breakdown of communication amongst council members, council members and HR Treasurer Trask, as well as, in my opinion, what was extremely poor treatment of the Nevada Road Housing Representatives. Shame on Mercy to determine for not shutting down this behavior, which I found totally unacceptable and apparently had consequences which extended outside the following date outside of this meeting. I concur that, as potentially chosen to fill these vacancies are another wonderful representation of the city of Ely has to offer to move us forward in a positive manner with regards to these appointments. The question begs to be asked, why are you just resigning from these four board liaison positions? If you're not satisfied with how fellow council members are conducting themselves, then perhaps you should resign as a council member for C4. Now, on the New Business Item Number 8, Proposed Changes to the Gaming License Ordinance 751, Bill 2023-05. Hallelujah. I'm encouraged to see Pine West back before this council and your willingness to consider additional information with regards to the proposed development on the corner of Great Basin Boulevard. Please let's not be swayed yet by the threats and intimidation tactics that are surely to follow, from one local casino owner and one potential casino slash block 3 department head over. I'm encouraged to see the revised ordinance language, but would respectfully request to amend the proposed limit to the 30 hotel rooms to coincide with the county's requirement. There's no reason we should have competing ordinances when both boards of elected officials have an obligation to your constituents. Please remember this tonight when the item is opened for discussion, possible action, and a voteless call. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, everyone. Hello, House Thursday, July 27th. Mayor Robertson in the Ely City Council. My name is Anna Kelly, and I'm here. And I'm here on behalf of the Hotel Nevada, and I'm here with regards to Agenda Item 8. While I am resolutely in favor of continuing on to the second reading that would validate your April 27th decision, I recognize that you are exploring the potential amendment to ordinance 702 that would increase the number of slot machines allowed to 40. 40 machines is a lot of machines. And if you're going to rewrite the 2017 ordinance again, I would respectfully request that we have the opportunity to look at the new proposed language together before it is amended to accommodate a very specific new development. Thank you for your time and service to the city of Ely.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on your Agenda Item 73, you are to consider appointing Mary Carter with the RCC Commission. That position needs to be filled by a councilperson committed with the city street needs. On your Agenda Item 74, you consider appointing Kitty Ginobili-Rovich to be White High County Audit Management Commission. That post, that position needs to be filled by an elected city councilperson. There may be a conflict if her bank is issuing loans to any killer entity. Mr. Mayor, on your Agenda Item 78, you are to consider changing Gaming License Ordinance 751, Bill Number 20223-05, changing the required criteria for slot machines, hotels, or motel rooms. That needs to die. I remind you again, the state NRS prohibits the city from assisting an enterprise, which is already established in the city or county in which the city is located. There is no real benefit to the city within the rule of the rule requirement. The city will receive a mittens from the gaming tax. Only through property and room tax will there be a substantial benefit to the community. We have gaming properties all to do with it, made that positive connected to the community. A small 31-room motel paid over $5,000 in room taxes in one month in the slowest part of the season. Those that get any gaming need to give back some and not just export revenue. Mr. Mayor, on your Agenda Item 79, you are to consider compliance options regarding fencing heights. The city needs to enforce established codes that have been in place for decades. You put people on the planning commission that are annoying, non-compliant, and now you're contemplating changing the rules for the carpetbaggers. The city has cited loopholes selectively for years. You need to stop the discrimination and bring those in violation and in compliance. Mr. Mayor, on your Agenda Item 76, you are to consider the annual performance evaluation, City Clerk Jennifer Lee. I want to remind you, she does not have the management experience nor a GED in management. She has failed to address city code violations by some means, the private commission, as well as some of the Ely City Council members. She has failed to ensure the proper enforcement of minimum media compliance on new projects throughout the city. She has failed to address and enforce the requirement of government better on new projects, so which some of which go back for years. She has failed to collect proper utility fees for RVs and/or squatters throughout the city. She continues to fail in enforcing fence height standards or as required by city code, which isn't something that's been getting through yet. She has yet to correct the control zone of fence on the city sidewalk right away, which would repeat that, excuse me, which would repeat those that are handicapped and force them on the city.
Thank you, Mr. Chatch, as that should be announced. Is there any other public comment?
On your Item 3, that's height.
Please state your name for the record, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Randy Reeder. I would like to see it changed because there is plenty of houses already have six-foot high fences in the front. I would like to put a wrought iron fence around my truck frame, just to keep the deer out. The fence won't keep them out. And I don't know what the reasoning for having, not being able to have a six-foot fence in the front, I'm sure someone said it was because of your sight, but they're not, and you can see it through. So I'd like to see it changed.
Steve Vakas, I happen to see that wanting to change ordinance, get ordinance changed for six-foot high fence in front. I also want to put a wrought iron fence up. It's 90% seater. It doesn't bother you. I understand six-foot wooden fence, but I want to try to get that formally changed where it can, wrought iron fence, you can have six-foot in your front door. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Here in the same number?
Pat Watson, City of Ely. You know, I'm just in shock this is all back on the agenda again because the people of Ely voted the council in to be their voice and to speak for them and to support them. And when I was on the council, we voted this in, this ordinance. It was for the benefit of Ely. And now it's in question. And I have to say, that's probably one of the most controversial councils that Ely has had because it involved the training. But this is something that everyone voted humanously on. Kurt, myself, Bruce Sidersstrom, Joel Gardner, Sam Hanson. It was a unanimous vote, and it was because we do care about the people of Ely. Now, if you think that Pine West cares about the people of Ely, you're nuts. It's just dollar science to them. We need things that are going to bring in more revenue for the city. The city needs more money. People here have worked so hard to clean up Ely and to make it nice to the point that we're voted number two city, most desirable, small city to visit. So let's keep it going. If you think slot partners are going to keep this going, wrong. I mean, on that corner, yes, we do need a new business there. But is this the answer? They have semis going all over in a residential area. Pine West comes into town, wants you to change a city street, wants you to change the, change a neighborhood into a business. And what, do you want a bunch of semis going around and there's still, there's still neighborhood there? I don't think this is the right way to go, even with the plan for Ely where the people have worked so hard to have things here forced to go where there's it, the Renaissance Village, all the things that go on here. This is something that we don't need. And when we put that ordinance in place, it was to have quality, not quantity. Do we need another convenience store, another gas station, you know, another slot warehouse? A slot parlor would be new. We have plenty of casinos in Ely to accommodate the current population. And I am totally against this. Oh, what was that face for? Samantha Elliott, the mayor? If you're disagreeing with what I'm saying, well, just come out and say so or do it in your vote. Don't sit there and make faces. That's not the job.
That's wrong, so this is public comment, please.
Pardon?
This is public comment, please stand on your.
And I still think everybody said.
Your 30 minutes is up.
What, I never?
That's it, 30 minutes.
Okay, I know it is. All right. But Samantha, I don't think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing as in the same number, we will close the public comment, and we will move on to Item 3. Mayor, discussion for possible action, approval of agenda, including removal of the items. Does anybody have a word on?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to regular moving item B8 toward the front of the agenda.
Can I stick it on the front of the business for that?
Yeah. I have a new business toward the front, so we got a pretty big Agenda item there, somewhere in there.
I will say, to follow the proper order, it seems that would make sense to have that before the public hearing on the second reading.
As far as 6, 1, and 2, Phil, do we need to table those? Or can we talk about those still tonight?
Phil, we'll be with you. Yeah, we can go ahead and table those. We didn't have a meeting today. If you want some kind of an update on what the topics are, I'm worried we wanted to give that, but we did not do any action on that there.
Does anybody have a word on?
Only the approval of the agenda changing move on the new B8 in the front of the agenda.
Table those.
Yeah. We have motion, Councilmember Alber, who has a second.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Alber. Any further discussion? Follow the paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. We're on item 4, City Department Reports. Don't we require secret here to know? Police Chief is also absent. Municipal Court Judge, do you have anything to add to the report you provided the council on? Judge Coster? City Attorney?
Nothing to report unless it's silent.
City Clerk?
On Tuesday, we were notified by the EPA that the Central Ely Cost Share Waiver I submitted for $660,000 was approved. Based on that, a program officer indicated that the second cost share waiver request I submitted, amount of $1.7 million, should be granted. On our broadband, Comnet has informed us that once construction starts, contractors should have fiber to City Hall in 45 days. Complaints, State Boy Office has received 38 complaints this year. Five of those complaints remain active. There are 20 remaining complaints from a prior year for a total of six active complaints. Councilman Alber protested that I submit an insurance claim on a 40-plus-year-old lift station pumps and associated expenses, which I've done. And staff and I have been working with four separate adjusters on that finding.
Any questions? Thank you.
If you'd be able to.
Oh, please, yes.
I thought this is my coster for the court. Sorry, I was not handling my computer correctly. I have nothing to supplement the written report, standard report, which sent to the state. But I did want to comment that for two months in a row, maybe three months in a row, now both courts, the Justice Court and the municipal court, are seeing reduced traffic cases that are being contested. This might be an effect of the new state law, which hits the very minor traffic laws, intrudes them as a civil law violation, and allows people to prepay by computer and in remote and not have to come to the window or come to court, and making the whole process more efficient. We're watching that to see if it has that intended effect and still serves the general public safety interest. So if you see fewer traffic cases on the report, I think that would be the explanation.
Okay. Any questions for Judge Coster? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, your honor.
City Treasurer, your City Fellow Work Supervisor? Any questions for Secretary Craig Craft? She are operators of city buildings, anyway?
Nothing to report.
Just notice the city engineer is the number to report on. Over, that one, anyone? We cut off here, yeah. Is there anything in your report?
There's nothing in this report.
With that, we'll move on to Item 5. Reports, the council, start with Councilman Trask.
Nothing to report.
All right, Councilman Carson?
No report.
Councilwoman Elliott?
I have nothing to report.
Councilman Alber?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have a report. And before I start this, this report, I've been cautioned by the attorney to watch how I present this. This report is based on nothing but true facts, public information, and using my First Amendment as, I can say of my own. In my opinion, I have a right to say my opinion. He's going to caution me if he feels I'm going off base. So at that time, I'll hold those statements for public comment. So this is the Councilman's report for July 27, 2023. In light of council actions and accusations directed toward myself during the July 13 council meeting, I feel it incumbent of me to address the mayor and my fellow council members. Hopefully, the mayor, council members, and appointed staff have given the official oath and sworn to follow it as written. The oath requires each person in Part 2, in quotations, bear truth, truth, and faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the state, any ordinance resolution, or the law of any state withstanding. The State of Nevada NRS 266 is a general law for corporations, cities, and towns, and directs, impacts the operations, and directly impacts operations of the city of Ely. There are many city ordinances that have been put in place by NRS, and it is the responsibility of the mayor and council to be aware of them, either by reading them or asking the city clerk or city attorney to assist. I am hopeful the elected officials, as well as the appointed officers, have read this NRS. In your spare time, you read it over and pay attention to NRS 266.600, General Powers of City Council, which it reads, that a city council may, number one, control the finances of the corporation. Therefore, I, along with other council members, have the authority as elected official of the city of Ely to question how the finances are being budgeted, spent, and we can make suggestions for possible changes to the finances of the city. Moving along, the way appointed employees were asked by the city treasurer to request a dollar amount be added to the fiscal year 2023, 2023, 2024 for an increase to their respective salary was unbelievable. Here's the breakdown provided by treasurer.
I'm getting into character and confidence.
Here's the facts. It was the, uh, treasurer's draft. The treasurer's draft and HR was, and certainly, Building Inspector Peterson did not request an increase. This is, this is public information right out of the budget, Mr. Mayor. That's what was in the budget.
Those facts...
The city attorney, city attorney requested a $15,000 dollar increase. That's public information. It's right in the budget process. This is from the cover up what's happening in this city right now. I'm continuing.
It's not...
Pilot complained on me. Mr. Pilot complained on me. Do what you want. The public needs to know what's going on.
You can have it on the agenda.
The city attorney requested a $15,000 dollar increase. Fire chief's clerk requested a $10,000 dollar increase. Mike Craigstaff wasn't an appointed official. I'm at the budget. This is right from the treasurer to me and a correspondent.
As long as he's just citing facts from the previous thing, I mean, is that straying into that or are we calling correct?
If the facts, if the facts touch, uh, an elected appointed official...
Because right now, the facts I'm hearing are just from the previous.
Right. But if the facts touch on an appointed official's competence, um, and character, there's going to need to be a personnel section. It could be on a later meeting.
If he is not, he is absolutely wrong. I got emailed to her, from her, and here's the answer, is what I'm reading. It was in the budget, Mr. Mayor. If you folks would have had an opportunity to go through the budget, you would have seen this. So I'm continuing.
If these...
Mike Craigstaff wasn't an appointed official. He found the budget, was being prepared and was not asked. However, and I say this in a serious tone, treasurer's draft reported a council person did request the budget of one, a $6,139 dollar increase for Mike Craigstaff. I must ask, why wasn't the council person's name reported? What's the big secret? Why is the dollar amount so exact? Mike was awarded $4,139 dollars increase for promotion to Public Works Director, bringing his salary exactly to $73,000 a year, leaving $2,000 still in the budget dedicated for Mr. Craigstaff. Is the plan of this secret council person to push the additional $2,000 to be awarded in September during annual review? Mike was a pelvis physician for a little over three months. In my opinion, the city treasurer, in making salary increases and accepting the secret person's request
Again, this is fair. We're giving an allegation as a allegation of character.
She, she wrote to me that she accepted the, the request from the councilman who's yet to be identified, Mr. Attorney. That's the fact.
That would be out of order. But under the city code, the council can vote to expel him from the meeting.
This is out of order. Can I, can I pause this for just a second? Can I get with you real quick?
Yes.
Do you mind if I look at that real quick, just to make sure we're on the same page?
Sure.
Thank you. The standard recesses for five minutes. We'll call this meeting back to order.
Okay, in light of the legal vehicles, I'll stop. I'm sorry for anybody still there. I'll try to have something put together for the August 17th agenda. You know, I just apologize. It's, uh, coming off strong. I believe in the city. And there's some shenanigans. I really believe it going on. We need to put a squelch on it. So I'll, I'll work on doing it politically correct and try not to upset the, the truth force. Okay. Sorry if I heard anything.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Oliver, do you? You have my report. Uh, we have a lot of events going on this summer. It's been great to see everybody in the community after those things. We appreciate everybody's hardworking participation. These things certainly do not get pulled off without a huge amount of volunteers and help from our local business community as well. I think it's fantastic. Uh, we'll move on to item six. Items for possible, for discussion, possible action of the ED city council as recommended by the ED, by the city tree board. Item one, Chairman Wolf discussion for possible action, recommendation, possible approval of an adoptive program for businesses and organizations.
We have to vote for...
We have to vote for table. Yeah, we did vote for that one for ED. There will be some, for councils to table that or to hear from Chairman Wolf on why that is the case. And, of course. Department of Transportation, that's part of their ED downtown project. Another possible method is to minimize care and upkeep of proposed factors. What is the measure of the word on that?
Who's the...
Motion from Councilman Crass? Second from Councilmember Oliver. All in favor for table?
Aye.
Any votes, carry this order? Item two, Chairman Wolf, discussion for possible action. Determination of recommendation of, on an event department transportation downtown, immediate landscaping and green infrastructure project plans. With approval, the consent set recommendations to an added department transportation.
Who's the table?
Most of them from Councilman Crass. Do I have a second? Second from Councilmember Oliver. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item, item seven, uh, this is the consent agenda. We have bills come to light 12 and July 18.
Let's make disclosure, Mr. Mayor, that some of these bills may be paid on behalf of the volunteer fire department. I'm a past member and I do receive some benefits from the volunteer. So if I feel I owe it, I guess I'm pursued.
Also disclose that, uh, Michael's been a member of the volunteer fire department. He doesn't get treated differently than any other member of the department. And I don't worry about this anyway. So there's my disclosure. Paul, do you have any motion for the bill?
I would approve.
Motion from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Oliver. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. Item B new business, uh, we will start with, with item eight.
I think you, you have no person who won't go here. A lot of them have done so fast, they're...
We'll, we'll start with item eight. Councilmember Oliver, discussion for possible action. Consideration of material changes to proposed gaming license ordinance 751, Bill number 2023, gap 205, allowing certain number of slot machines without requiring hotel rooms. If the establishment needs certain additions to be determined, with direction of the city attorney to make said changes.
Okay. Like everybody in the audience has said, we're all tired of going over this and over and over. We're trying to find a happy medium. So when you, when you look at the drawing and what Terrible is trying to put in, there is actually no room to put a hotel. So again, you know, the tourism record, they want, they want the rooms. I live one better for the city, cleaning up some property that's pretty much derelict. We can go forward with this. That's probably to bring new businesses into town. But to possibly lose a, a big project that's got environmental issues out there on it or the fact that we don't have room on the map for a motel or hotel, that's, in my opinion, we just need to put that in there and see if that's such a diehard thing. You know, there's a list we have, that every one of them, you know, that's, uh, a gaming license out there, they operate more than 16 slot machines in one establishment, but not more than 40 if the commercial establishment meets the following criteria. One, restaurant tavern operates, excuse me, occupies an area of at least 25 hundred square feet, which is open and available to patrons six days a week. Number two, restaurant tavern contain a permanent physical bar. Three, restaurant slash tavern which serves food ordered by patrons from tables or booths, includes a kitchen and three, includes dining area and seating for at least 25 persons in a room separate from the on-premise kitchen. Four, restaurant tavern that is open to, like, six days a week and offers permanent seating for at least 40 patrons. And the property size is under, uh, five acres. And then the other option, you know, gaming license. Then they operate more than 40, one slot machine at one establishment. If that establishment al- also offers permanent accommodations of at least 50 hotel motel rooms. So you got both choices in there instead of just hardlining on one. But I'd like to point out also is, we've got probably five or six properties right here on Main Street, ED, that are empty. And let's just imagine we had a sports complex come in, uh, bar, like Bullies. They sit there, they got food, they got booze, and they got over 40 machines in there. There's no place on this main street you can put a hotel on any of these big lots. So if they come in there, they want to put in the 40-some machines and have a, a sports bar, Bullies, uh, that's one I frequent over in Spanish Springs. It's a nice place. There's no room there on their property to, uh, put a hotel. Are we going to be tying our hands to progress downtown for gaming? This is Nevada. It's, it's got gaming hot spots. It's fun. It's drinking. It's what Nevada's all about. In some sense, I understand the gaming part of it. But the waivers, like they said, they're going to put in a huge hotel. And then the people are going to come and visit and stay with it. So that, that's the, the change that I'm mentioning on there. Certain condition to be determined, you know, without requiring hotel rooms. Basically, I think every, I believe everything is in there other than property size. If it's under five acres, you know, you can't build a 40-room hotel motel on. And looking at the map right there, it's 3.9 square acres. There's not enough room for that. So we take a chance. Again, let's gamble. The council voters, they want to, again, we probably have to start from scratch one again. We're not going to make everybody average, and I'm sure I don't make a lot of people. That's my, do, any comments? I'm welcome.
I would like to just add too, I don't know. Looking at this and thinking about this, this kind of came about when Lobos came about and, and Lobos has 40, or 40 machines in there. So I feel like this, what Jim is saying here, kind of the second low point, um, you know, I, I mean, I do like that acres, but I don't want to make it any more complicated than it needs to be. But if you make the play feel level, they're at 40, this kind of came out at 40. That seems like a number that would just capital, you know? That way, if everyone's operating at the same...
To me, I guess I, I would agree that this lot is, um, undurable for a hotel motel. To me, the five acres sounds a little big, but that's just my personal opinion.
What was the comment Kurt on? The five acres, I don't think you said, but five acres is too...
It, it sounds a little big to me, but I really haven't made it without, so...
Even, even book might have been on five acres, I think.
Because that's 3.9. Do you ever think of a little bit where it's in there, so...
Yeah, I think so. If it ends at, because it's, it's possible. The second low point, personally, if, if, if there was to be a change again and Jim said, yeah, we're obviously all over again, but...
So you're talking about the second low point, being a gaming license out there. They may operate within the 41 slot machines in one establishment. They have establishment authorized for rent accommodations of at least 50 hotel rooms.
Yeah. I would be getting maybe say 30 rooms to be consistent on the counting. If we're going to change it, I would just be consistent. That would be the one we have.
Do we keep the tavern, restaurant?
I could keep most, yeah.
Wait, you want to keep all of, you want to do all of these? I would just think just, I don't think we need tavern. I mean...
So you're just saying they want 41 machines, then they do rooms. But if they want to put in...
I mean, that's kind of what Lobos is doing, right? I mean, that's where, Lobos also has 78 establishments, but...
Right.
And offers some of them. I mean, I guess, you know, are you okay with all those, one through five?
It can be done.
It can be done, okay. And I guess I do, I would agree with Sam on the, the, yeah, and I was on it earlier from a date. I would, I could just continue. That's my big thing. I'm trying to streamline as many things as possible.
I like that idea of streamlining. I agree with you there. But I still, I think, you know, as you may mention, we need more eateries in town. Place to go eat and, uh, I, I think we need to have something in there. So it's just not gambling.
Not a slot parlor.
Yeah, that's not a slot parlor. You know, like that's, we still, people come to town, they, you know, stay in the other hotels. They might want to try something that's not quite so zing 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 and go down there. I, I like to see, you know, this, again, let's make Terrible come to the plate. You're going to put some money out there, put it out there, put a restaurant in, a bar, tavern.
So what's the next report to Councilon, say?
But let me ask you this too. With that being said, could they come in under these guidelines and not build a gas station out front?
It looks like they could.
They really could.
As long as they have the bar and the restaurant.
Yeah.
And I would ask clarification on the acreage. If, if the council goes that direction, does that mean anyone over the five acre lot, despite having a restaurant and bar, would need the hook arms?
It would appear to be that one.
Okay, there's one to clarify.
And would this impact any businesses there? I'm looking now, I guess, we'd have to look out.
We have to restart. We have to do the business impacts again, too.
That's correct. Um, I think the five acres is a little prescriptive, but items one through four, I think are, are probably the things. It doesn't, it wouldn't prohibit that from opening a, a gas station. It just requires...
Sure, sure. All I can get at is they really don't have to follow this.
On the acreage, I'm sorry, Kurt, on the acreage, you know, I just look at 3.9, where it was, 3.96, plus or minus. The five acres, you know, again, I'm not a farmer, you know? But what they've showed there, you know, the convenience store, the gas stations, parking, the slot, uh, slot area, you know, there's no room, we're going to have drawing them. But they're 3.9 acres to put a hotel. So maybe we only need the, the property does not have room for a hotel. You can't put one there.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's kind of self, selfless. 14,000 square foot piece of property, you're not going to put a Walmart on. That's not going to happen. And I suppose you could, but... So you could put anything behind that.
So the property size, that'd be...
I mean, the other thing, I guess, and I can hear wrong, but I, I mean, technically, is a motel there already on that five acres, but, or less than that? Um, but that doesn't include the gas station. So that's when they start adding other stuff into it, so...
I think the requirement is something that has changed a lot since a lot of those buildings got built.
Right.
I understand, um, where it was coming from, but I still think I would like to see the hotel. I understand the limitations, but then I wonder how many other people will come in and do this so they can skirt the issue of having motel rooms. So...
So that's a good point. But like I said, the empty lots downtown, half a dozen of them, there's places for business to be there, you know, where we can, they're right in the redevelopment area. The, the money can be, help, help you construct that. But if we're going to put in a sports bar, bigger one, and there's no room to build a hotel, you know, the, the, the way they want to do it, they have 40-plus slot machines for those who lose business, possible business, you know? A little bit of hanging the carrot out there. Here you go, come on the town.
Any person, I would like to see the property size in there because, you know, that kind of takes a fight out of, oh, there's no room there. Well, who's saying that? Building inspectors, your engineer, you know? It's not dedicated five acres or whatever you want to call it. Keep it in there.
How do you think that?
I don't have strong feelings on the other. There's someone, if the Trump is building something on smaller pieces of property, I suppose they can.
Right.
And just to preclude that, you can put a hotel on there if they have your five acres.
I think most of our hotel properties are less than five acres, quite honestly. Do you think copper clean or prospect or... 복장은 좀 less than five acres, I suppose.
So where do we go? I will say that if the council chooses to, um, approve this item, that would mean the, uh, we would still have to have the public hearing on the second reading. But the action item on the second reading would need to be tabled or let go.
A lot of that.
Yeah, the Washington's, right. Are there any questions in the discussion or is there something?
I'll make a motion and go along with that, worded there with, again, ED West. I'll make the motion, and go along with that, worded there with, again, do we specify acreage, Kurt, by, by number, or?
I would prefer so. If I had my choice, I, I would say four acres, bro. So if you don't agree with me, four or five acres is fine.
Four and a half.
Or according to the plans.
Yeah, I, I'll make the motion with those, so I, five items in there, with the acres, the property size to be four acres.
Thirty rooms.
Thirty rooms. Yeah, and thirty rooms, correct, that's accurate.
Motion from Council on Hall, is there a second?
All second.
Second from Council on Hall, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's four in favor, we have this, motion passes.
Well, and that did, in the direction of the city attorney to make the changes.
Uh, with that, we'll move back to item one, Mayor Robinson, discussion for possible action. Approval of signed standard AIA agreement for base roof, the design project on City Hall, Alcaton Architecture, LLC. Um, this is just next phase, uh, this agreement is still in the grant funds that we have available currently. Are there any questions? On, uh, can I have a moment? Please. Second. Motion from Council on Carson, second.
Second.
Second from Council on Carson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. Item two, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, acknowledgement of Council on Hall's resignation from the Northern Nevada. Nevada Northern Railway Foundation Board of Directors, and appointment of Council member, Charles Bass, to fill that position.
If I could, just, I'd like to sort of explain each one of these, why I did what I did. I, I think it's something we need to look at, you know, if a person's in for a four year term, I've served two and a half years on this, I really think it's time, maybe we look at. To break out time, roll somebody else into it to give them, their, get their feet wet in, or another person does not run for election again. Or it turns out, it's not cold turkey. So that, that's when, you know, I've served on that, there is a lot going on with the railroad that other council members need to be aware of. When it comes to that time, so that's, that's why, you know, Ms. Penner thinks I'm being a crybaby, that's not the whole idea. It's, it's, I think it just need to get some new blood in there, so somebody look at it different. I look at things way different, trust me, than a lot of people do, so I just think that's what I did, I think Terry will be a good, feel, good fit.
And I did go and talk to Mark, I've said about this for a good hour or so, and kinda know what I'm giving myself a thing to, so, uh, looking forward to. Great, and we appreciate you being willing to serve him, thanks for the time to put into that Council on Hall as well. Um, Councilman Bass was gracious enough to set my appointment, I will, can only confirm that.
I'll move to approve, second board.
All second. Motion from Council on Carson, second from Council on Hall.
See, the transition.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any? Carry this order. Item three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, acknowledgement of Council on Hall's resignation from the Regional Transportation Commission, RTC. An appointment of Mary Kern to fill that position. I will say that in the process of researching this, and anytime we do that appointment, I try to go back and make sure that we've read all of the requirements on this, and as it turns out. Council members are eligible to serve on the RTC, so I, I appreciate the opportunity to look at that, so we can correct that. Um, and, uh, Mary Kern is a community member, we serve on the number boards, and has, um, level of experience and works a lot of contracts. And is, I, I think will bring some, uh, good experience to the RTC for the time she'll be on it, and she was also gracious enough to set mine on.
Okay, and I want to throw my comments on, I really enjoyed working on the RTC, because not only was my previous experience with the city. And the, and the good crew to work on it, and plus my six years with the county road department, you know, to carry the force. And then once again, it's one of those deals, now we got the public works director, I think that person and the treasurer, they need to be there. At those meetings and pushing for the benefit of the city, you have to have a voice that's gonna be strong. Because the RTC, they, they got a lot of pull from the county side, you know, the, the five cent diesel fuel tax. Ninety-nine percent of diesel fuel is sold in the city dearly, and push, 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 they have to push. And we, we the city got a hundred thousand dollars this year of RTC, uh, RTC five cents diesel fuel tax. That's a big amount of money which is gonna go to improve the, the streets. And Mary, again, again, she's, she's been all around the city, but Mike's got the pulse on, on the crew. I think he's gonna have to gather up in the truck door, and look at stuff, he just can't go to a meeting and walk in there and, uh, what's going on? You know, we need the treasurer to push, push, push for this money, figure out creative ways to get it, so, but once again, it's. The two years I, I've enjoyed it, but let's get somebody else's feet wet, because they've already had a change on the, on the county side board too. They're like, oh, this is the color woods off, 'cause he retired, and you got Martin, and Martin's doing, then you got the gal, uh, working in the office, they changed the whole structuring process. So once again, I, I think we got a, now we got public works director with a lot more stroke, and he can get in there, we just gotta be aggressive, if, if we're gonna. Now, when I say we, I'm in the city to get RTC funding. Uh, BJ's a good source of in, uh, input on stuff like that, so he's a resource you can't live without, so. We just need, make sure Mary, she wants to get on board and go out in the street once while she's at home, so that's my comments on that.
With that, will I have a motion?
I'm gonna get a motion.
Motion from Council on Hall, is there a second?
One second.
Second from Council on Hall.
I guess I can make a motion.
You have a question.
I don't wanna get the slot.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. Item four, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, acknowledgement of Council on Hall's resignation from the Weyton County Debt Management Commission, and appointment of Katie Jane Oliva-Zich to fill that position.
I'll move to approve.
Motion from Council.
Let me add my comments before I'm getting off that.
Well, we can give your comments, since we have a second.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay, the reason I'm getting off that, that meeting, I'll tell you what, it, it, with every, the county and the city and the hospital board, they all have their, gonna be boards on debt. You know, plus they got audited, so if you screw up, they're gonna be on it, to sift through that meeting. Good luck, Katie, Katie's a great person, she's in the finance business, that's about the more boring meeting than government sitting in there, and I got better things, you're in my time to sift it out. On the spread of the front.
Well, um, Ms. Jane Oliva-Zich, I think that does have a lot of experience, and with, with finances, and she was, she's been a great member of our community and resident in the city. And happy that she was able to accept the appointment for that, thank you for the, the motion and the second, if there's any further discussion, I'll take that. If not, I'll, I'll, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. Item, uh, five, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, acknowledgement of Council on Hall's resignation from the Weyton County Board of Equalization. An appointment of Katie Jane Oliva-Zich to fill that position. These boards, these boards means, I think, together three times a year.
Yeah, there's some different terms up, but I got, uh, I like to.
I will say for this item, um, the word of equalization, does, there's nothing that actually states that, um, that it's supposed to, uh, include a city official. So technically for this one, if we could just change the wording to, um, recommendation or recommend appointment of, to the county commission, and then they would approve the appointment. I think it's been, uh, practice to have a city official on that board, and.
It's not required to have a city.
It's not required, so technically they would need to approve the appointment.
This is one of the few ones that they would need to approve.
Yes.
So this is a recommendation to the county from the city for appointment of Katie Jane Oliva-Zich.
Yes.
Do I have a motion for that? All in motion, I would just, motion from Council on Carson, I have a second.
One second.
Comment, please. Okay, this is, once again, this is one of those boards, we need to get the people baptized against us, you wanna go to a meeting, I mean, you're dealing with an assessor. Nobody likes to tax a meeting, nobody likes to be taxed for nothing, and he follows the letter of the law, and nobody likes the letter of the law when you, when you get taxed. Whether it's on new construction, old construction, whatever you wanna do, those meetings last two to three hours. And you're open, you listen to both sides, the assessor, in my opinion, does a great job, follows the rules, the law, and. The last two, three of them, they've appealed, the, the folks objecting, they've appealed it to the state board of legalization. And the state board, so far, I haven't heard about the last two yet, the state board has agreed with the local Weyton County assessor that it was assessed correctly. So once again, I think that the good governmental way to see how things go, again, it's, it gets crazy, but I'm, I'm done with crazy, that's. Let somebody else sit on there, Katie hopefully has tough skin.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order, thank you. Item six, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, annual performance evaluation of city clerk and clerk lead. To improve, but not limited to consideration of character, or misconduct, professional competence, or physical or mental health. Possible action includes, but is not limited to termination, suspension, demotion, reprimand, reduction, or increase in paid promotion, endorsement, engagement, retention, or no action. John Jacob Jingle Hammer Schmidt, so, um, with that, welcome. Um, is there anybody who would like to start from Council on Hall?
Uh.
Please.
Um, Jennifer, I'd like to say to you that, uh, I think you're doing an amazing job, you have quite a bit on your plate. Uh, I know whatever, still being the newbie, whatever, I need some information. Um, you always break things down, so they're understandable, uh, you're always keeping us informed. I feel like I know what you're doing, and sometimes I wonder how you do it, because it, it's a lot coming at you, so, um, I think your performance is still a good job.
I like that, also, I've worked many years with, uh, Jennifer, she's probably one of, one of the people's other, my mom, that tells me to shut up and play away. You know, she's guided me in some instances we've had, where I'm like, go to left field, she says, you're way out based, you'll come back in the realm, and she keeps a cool, calm demeanor, which is really hard for me to accept. But she's, the money she's getting, working with the Porter Group, their fire stuff, BJ gives to her, what the Porter Group gives to her, boom, we get a finished product, we got money coming in. You gotta be dedicated and really playing your game on this, you gotta be a hundred percent into it, and she's one of the employees, and I hope I can say this correctly. That gives a hundred percent plus, she's, she's dedicated to the position, and that, it's not a pleasant position, I sat in that position, and. The workload back then was nothing like it is right now for her, so I, I think she, she does the job very well.
I would like to just say, as a new council member coming in, that Jennifer has been above professional in her, her duties. I feel like she goes above and beyond for any questions I have, um, she opened her door the minute, the minute that I was elected, answered any silly things I may have had. Um, provided every detail I've ever asked for, so I just appreciate you, uh, for giving me the opportunity to speak as much as possible, and, uh, and being there with the open door. No matter what's going on on your busy, busy, busy day, so I appreciate that, thank you.
And I just want to say thanks to, you do a tremendous job, I was ecstatic when you took this clerk's job, and, uh, we've been through a lot, ups and downs, but, uh, the city is a lot better with you there, so thank you.
I would echo all of the stated things, um, I think you keep the city truly running, not just us up here when we have questions, but everybody else, so you keep the city alive, we appreciate it. And the team, about a good team. Can I add one more thing to say? I would like to be to know that Jennifer is also working on a master's degree in business. That's a big deal, and still doing the work that she's doing, that's nothing but a benefit, even more to the city.
My brother. How do you feel, um, this past year has gone? Are there things that you'd like to see corrected, or are there problems you're having from their success of your experience?
I think from well, um, I think the amendment with the state, um, on LMI is, is waiting for the examiner, it's coming next month. So that would be a positive thing for us, and I think complaints, um, you know, Pat has sort of sound to a well-oiled machine. And, and, you know, we, we went through five real quick this morning, um, and, um, yeah, so, I, I think that's all well. And we're hopeful that we get good news on our LMI members, on CEG, but if we don't, I think we've got enough time to appeal and time for the application paperwork, so.
Are you finding you're able to, um, you have to stay late less often?
Yes.
Than you had when we started before you were going, and Council on Hall kept saying two years, but we, we've been here for over four years now.
Yes, yeah.
I advise you to have.
Super slow.
That's right. So you feel you're being able to, um, leave your visible hour, and you're not having to spend too much extra time after hours before hours?
Yeah, it's, it's that right, I mean, my office would get kind of tough.
Yes.
That's a goal, to get that down to a lower, so.
Um, is there, are, are there changes you would request of the council, or you'd like to see in clerk's department that would make things easier, or maybe more effective for the time you're spending?
I think down the road, it would be good to get, um, a digital fingerprinting machine down the city hall, I think that would be a good change. Uh, according to that, I think that would be an investment, but, you know, down the road, I think that would be good.
Are there, um, I, I know we do a lot of trainings, and I, I appreciate, would like to give you props for how much, uh, you, how much effort you spend organizing a lot of that. I know you and the treasurer do your diligence in making sure that not only the council has access to training, but our employees. Is it, are there other trainings that you think would be a benefit that we haven't done, or that, you know, because of cost we haven't done, that would make people more proficient with the programs we have, or?
No, um, I, I know the treasurer trust his plan already for, well, in two ten, the Castell Conference, and this fall, um, Desiree's attending the HR conference. Um, yeah, so I think, I think we're in a good place with the training.
Could you speak a little bit to how your workload and how your staff might change in the coming year, uh, since, uh, bringing on, uh, the works director, which has shifted a lot of that, lack of your play?
Yeah, I mean, there are some things, um, like the drug testing, um, being that end app contact, um, that's getting shifted to Mike. Um, and he's done a great job so far, and, 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 um, yeah, so that, that definitely helps.
And, and like it, um, just for the council's benefit, I mean, I don't think any of our departments are in any position where there's, um, ever a lack of things to do. We're always scrambling to get every last little bit of things that we can, there's always more that could be done, um, but that is certainly just the nature of working in a small organization like we do, so. I, I echo all the council members' comments on, on how well and efficient you prosecute your duties, and, um. I'm pretty sure no balls, you know, and it's, uh, it's not a small, it's not a small job, so. Are there any questions from the council, anything they'd like to add? Is there anything you'd like to add?
No.
Any requests for the council this year?
No.
Done off?
No.
It's okay.
Need a raise.
With that being said, um, how would the council like to proceed with this agenda?
I'll applaud, we join.
A motion for John Woben?
Yeah, that's for endorsement.
Endorsement. Or go action.
Those are the options.
It's endorsed.
Endorsed, okay. Motion to endorse for John Woben, and, um, from Council on Carson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Council on Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carry this order, thank you. Uh, item seven, Council on Hall, Council on Hall, discussion only, update on the board.
Mayor, just, uh, I apologize to interrupt, but, um, I forgot to bring this up, the, uh, the public hearing is still five thirty.
It's so far down on the agenda. We will skip down to item eight, then the mayor will reassess the regular city council meeting. For a public hearing, I'd like to begin on the following topics, item one, council members, city clerk lead. City agent, your honor, for a public hearing discussion only, consideration of the citizens' comments regarding eligible activities the city really should apply for under the state CEG program. That's the public hearing, and you will take, uh, any suggestions and comments from the public on possible CEG matters. on possible CDG projects.
How are you? Good, good. My name's Janet Adkem, and I'm with the Whitekind Public Museum. The public museum was established in 1959 by a group of dedicated volunteers. Our current group of work members and employees continue to provide a unique place for locals and travelers to spend a few hours viewing our local history. We are a standalone organization that is not affiliated with either the county or the city. We are a nonprofit museum that relies solely on grants, donations, memberships, and events to keep the doors open. It's a daily struggle to keep this charming little museum open to the public. As you can imagine, money is very tight at the museum, and that's why we're, we would like to be considered for the community development lock grant proposals. It's our hope that you will work with us in updating the entire museum grounds fencing. Currently, we have wrought iron and stone fencing along Alden Street that's rusting and falling apart. The gates are a struggle to open and close, and the cement work around the stone hedge is deteriorating and allowing rocks to roll onto the sidewalk, which we've had several close calls with pedestrians walking. The chain link fencing along the sides and back is piecemeal at best and does not provide adequate security for the artifacts in the lorry or. We feel that updating the fence will provide better security for the museum grounds and artifacts, and ensure the safety of our visitors. It will add to the appeal of the neighborhood and add a more pleasing atmosphere to the museum grounds. We hope you consider the public museums one of your projects. If you have any questions, I'll answer them. If not, I hope you agree.
Thank you.
Good.
Any others?
Yeah, we do. Sure. Hi, my name is Richard Barth, and this is my neighbor Julie Stevens. We have a flyer that we wanted you guys, we didn't have a chance to pass it out, I guess we needed your permission. Yeah. All right. It's got the pictures, and it's got the statement. This is in regards to our property, I live at 409 Eli Avenue, which is at the end of North Street and Eli Avenue, at the bottom of the hill, and it's in regards to the flooding that we go through constantly, monsoon, winter, rain, snow. We're trying to, we were trying to control it, it hasn't been bad, I've been there for almost twenty years, and it's seen it just, I guess progressively get worse and worse. It was just much water, but now it's rocks, and it's a, it's a pretty much a dangerous mess, and we get a little bit of belly washing, so we wanted to apply the trade with the lock ramp to get some foot control, you know, sidewalks, maybe get the, there's a drainage pipe that drains the west side of the railroad tracks into Eli, and that's where a lot of the water, you know, stuff comes in, and it's, I guess it was there, put that up years and years and years ago, to relieve the pressure of that water that collects over there, because that's the, you know, the L track, the tracks put there, so it's, it's got to be kind of dangerous at times, and that's what we're here for.
We need to hear the same council members. My name is Julie Stevens, I live at 392, actually, Lord. I am, I am, we're here on behalf of our, myself, my neighborhood. Going forward, me and our will be used to reference to myself and to our neighborhood. Our neighborhood within the intersection of Eli Avenue, North Street, and Fay Avenue's business here today is to address foot control, ADA access, and communication of our neighborhood, also to express our concerns and issues of specific requests. The items of our interest are the railway drainage pipe at the west end of North Street at the bend to Fay Avenue on the west side of Eli Avenue, also in the same area, making our sidewalks safe for those who have mobility challenges. The current condition of the city railway drainage pipe has allowed substantial flooding in our streets and washing out substantial areas of our properties, namely paths. There is imminent potential that future flooding and washout will cause further destruction to our properties and sidewalks, also potentially driving property owners, including our elderly homeowners, and our pets of wildlife and our neighborhood to succumb to injuries, health issues, or possible death of a family member, not to mention damage to any vehicle that drives through the area. Last but not least, a possible railway collapse. Our requests are to be approved for a government grant in order to re-channel the floodwater flow on the west side of the railroad track, said railway drainage pipe, while sealing the pipe. To accomplish this, we request that underground, excuse me, to accomplish this, we request that underground drainage be installed to direct the floodwaters into the underground flood control system. Also, we request that from the existing sidewalks, curving, and weeded, located on the north end of Fay Avenue, going east, down north, and south sides of North Street, to either end install ADA-approved sidewalks, curving, and weeded. In closing, we appreciate your inning effort to resolve these issues that we are concerned with. All of our neighborhood will benefit from these improvements. We thank you for allowing us the opportunity for to speak to you.
And Mayor, can we provide some of those copies, just put them on the end of the table for any of the public that want to view what they provided to the council?
I got a question. The very last picture looks like the mud going into this house. I see equipment tracks. Who's the equipment?
The city comes and cleans it up after the fact, and usually send it out the other side, because, you know, it's a, I guess it costs the city, you know, when, you know, mud comes across. From what I've gathered, this was done in the heft of the railroad, you know, I mean, the city owns the railroad, so it was, it was becoming a problem. This was before I did in there, but, I mean, it was a solution, and, you know, I'm not, we're not trying to blame anybody, or, you know, we just want to, it's, it's becoming a constant problem, and, well, I feel like, you know, if you came on my property, and my house is, you know, there's rocks and mud and everything, and you had an accident, my insurance would have to, you know, I would have to pay for your medical, I'm afraid some, sooner or later, somebody's gonna have the same situation from your, my property going to the, across the street, that's the city's property. So, we're talking about city property that's being flooded, washed away, and rocks going down the street, and mud, and cars can't get through there, people can't get through there, and then when it drives up, it's a mess, and they have to send out crews to clean it up, and, and then it drives out and it turns into a big dust bowl, so it's, it's becoming not only, it's just a hazard, health-wise, and, you know, physically, somebody could get hurt.
With the last two rainfall that we've had, we've had two major floods coming down that street, and that was within three weeks apart.
That was last year. And these pictures are from last year?
Those are from last year, but we had two floodings within three weeks apart.
This year.
This year.
I've seen the added rocks in that storm rain picture.
Yeah.
Poland.
That's what, that's what we'd like to see go underground into the flood control.
They gave them to put rocks around it, but still, it's the, it's the mud, and the rocks, and the dirt comes down on the other side of the railway drainage pipe. Comes through that pipe, and then washes everything down into our street. Well, pretty soon, that's gonna get blocked, sooner or later, and, and then pretty soon, it's gonna put more pressure on to that railroad track, but from what I've heard in the past, the reason why that pipe was put there is because there was a big lake area back there that would always flood up, and there was concern that was gonna wash the rail, the railway away. Well, the same thing's gonna happen very soon, because that, that area is just deteriorating every time it rains, and there's, I mean, the best solution we feel is to reconstruct drainage tier issues down underground into our existing flood system, and push it up underground so that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
So, BJ also received this suggestion, turn idea, I guess he's a city contact. Thank you for asking about public project ideas. I'm submitting two very basic descriptions, and a lot of improvement, the city water supply lines in Morley Avenue area, the problem is to blow, blow, blow water pressure to that street. And number two, the person suggesting feasibility study and pretty engineering reports of using non-pro per water and reclaim water flow on either city parks, of course. So, that's what we've received so far, our ideas, and we've got one on all about, and things we wanted the training.
Question to BJ. When the morgue happened, did that, because the proximity of the tank to get the water from is so close to it, so there's no head. That's what I, we look at.
Is there any solution besides those two, like tying somewhere, tying those home to a different part of the system, or?
No, I mean, even if you kind of moved it, it's backwards, just, it's just too close elevation of the same water tank, so pressure is just terrible.
About the pressure sustaining, though, would that not work in that situation?
No, because we don't have that pressure, pressure there yet.
Is that higher than, like, the terrace grid? Homes on there?
I mean, the system's on the back, right?
Yeah, but the terrace is on different zone.
Zone.
Yeah. Yeah, these are, these are different, on courthouse tanks, and it's almost look across, courthouse tanks is a little bit higher than they are, not enough higher than that. And so, so with all of these projects that were presented, you know, I requested some of the people that adopted these, hey, please come and present this to the city, just so we have an idea of what's going on, and so with what's being presented, I'll go back and I'll work with these individuals in the museum and everybody else to kind of come back and find too, and their ideas, and what's associated with it. And the other thing that I can't answer right now is, is whether they're going to be eligible or not, but we can work through that process to figure out which ones may be eligible, which ones may not be eligible. Some of the things that Jennifer expressed earlier in here, is talking about our LMI areas, you know, we've got to get our LMI areas modified.
Can you explain to the people what LMI stands for?
LMI stands for low to moderate income, and so CDG projects have to go into areas that are LMI, which are 50% or higher. And so, right now, the way that is associated, I don't believe that our LMI areas are correctly labeled within our city, and so we're working with them, and I'd say we're kind of waiting for them to come out with some of the new census, hopefully they'll get them straightened out. If not, that's what Jennifer expressed earlier, then we kind of appeal to them, hey, I think you guys got these things mixed up, we don't believe it truly represents our state.
The one with the impact on the LMI, I know it's by area that you do the census, is the fact that the mines pay a lot of money.
Yes.
And that do not help the efforts, you know.
And actually, the last double CDG, we actually tried last time, but when, we had announced, we actually tried to get surveys or whatever, Nevada Rural Water helped us well, and actually went door to door trying to get that revised, and get input from the citizens, and we just need to actually see that input back to be able to truly make them eligible. And so, last year, we actually, truly, the projects that were presented to us did not come out because of the LMI area. And so, we're trying to, except wait for the LMI area, hopefully it's been fixed in the census, and we'll be able to change that.
Thank you. Any other suggestions for public hearing, proceeding, you've got? Hearing now, we will.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
How many?
Mr. Channis.
How many projects can you put in?
How many projects can you put in for clerkly, Jennifer?
Well, I'm sorry.
How many projects can you put in for?
Two. You know, but we're at the stage where we can talk about a lot of projects, you know, and then boil it down, remember, December.
On what qualifies? Two projects.
Okay, I want to support the people that were here before me on EB Street and Center, but I also want some consideration for the drains coming off the half property on Seventh Street. It's jumping across EB Street, eroding along my property. I can't do basic maintenance along my fence, because you put in riprap, or the water is tearing away at my fence. Once it comes down EB Street, it's on my accessway, it's gone ten yards and six inches.
This is on Eli and Seven?
Eli and Seven.
Eli and Seven.
Yeah, it should be very simple. Had we had curb wetter along there, the water would have gone straight down Seventh Street, but it's not doing that. Now, I've got gallons in my accessway, and they're eight inches to a foot, it keeps getting worse, and your city code says you may not drain onto another person's property. Unfortunately, it's been years, I've asked for help in the past, I don't want to take away from the people prior, because they have bigger priorities, but it is a concern mine, and I want to address it if it's a number two. Thanks.
Any other suggestions? If there are none, we will add to this hearing. Councilmember, city attorney, public hearing discussion only, approval of second reading of order number 751, bill number 2023 dash zero five, proposal ordinance, ending title three, chapter five, section thirteen, of the EB City Code, requiring gaming license applicants to operate slot machines that have at least forty refill rooms, and provide other matters to their interests. Any public comments on this topic?
Well, I refilled a comment, and I'm gonna give it, even though it's gonna not go to a vote. Carrie Pindar, 1417 Mill Street, public hearing item number two, second reading ordinance 751, mail 2023 dash zero five. I stand here before you again, asking you to push pause on enacting this ordinance without the proposed language changes per email received this afternoon. Having attended these meetings from the beginning, when Pine West first presented to the RPC, they've been upfront in scope of her project. detailed plans were offered for viewing, and questions have been allowed to be asked and thoroughly answered for months now. The council is subjecting them to repeated visits of reminiscent or prior council, led to me and my husband back in 2014, in regards to Cannon Street. It's exhausting and uncalled for. No matter your decision tonight, one that will go, one side will go away unhappily, and I just hope I'm not that side of it. I am a proponent of the project, and I'm not convinced with this cute business study which you accepted, and in my opinion, did not reflect the role of business owners, because only 25 of 552 questionnaires were sent out to light businesses, and of that, only 12 were returned. I do not think that was a suitable sampling, as only 4.5% of the licensed business owners were considered, and less than half of that responded. Third remark, the council should not be determined from looking at both sides, pros and cons, and making a decision free of threats and intimidation decisions you were subject to in past city council meetings. Personally, I hope that the casino owner and potential developer of those hundred luxury apartments that are going to rent in excess of $2,000 per room for the one-bedroom, complete your DNA testing for their dog crap, let the high owner expensive green space make good on their threat to pull their development if Pine West is allowed to proceed, because it's no secret I do not lock that out my front door, but lacking you. Finally, I would ask you, where are the Copper Queen representatives? They are not here, because they are all for free enterprise. They have shown confidence, and if you treat your customers right, they will choose to support you. These select three casino owners and one convenience store owner are worried about their own profit margins, not necessarily what's best for the residents of the city of Eli and Whitekind County. So, please, 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 make a decision tonight, and let's move Eli forward instead of continuing to be stuck in the past. It is your obligation to the residents to bring in new business and help Eli to continue to prosper now and for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I want to strongly encourage the city council to adopt this code. Again, it's got no business restricting businesses. To put on a restriction of forty slots on any given business, once they have a unrestricted license, I don't believe the city can do that. You're not part of the business community. Those that put in the investment destiny, just need some consideration. Now, you cut down the requirement, 50 rooms down to 40, now you're going to 30. Now, are we going to do, are we going to go down to 20, or you took a quarter? I don't think so. The corner of 701, where the proposed development is, is run down. I turned in a consideration, I want to know if there was a letter, memo citation or anything, and the correspondence, given that the owners of 701 take care of a problem there, an army that's been falling down for a year or more. You folks are ignoring it. Does the property in that general area look bad? Absolutely. But they don't conform to the rules and regulations, the few people put in. So if someone wants change, they just ignore the upkeep of their property, so someone can come in and say, look, we're going to bring in this great proposal. You're not talking about a shoe store, a clothing store, another grocery store. Items that we need in this community. We do need change, but we also need to enforce the rules and regulations that we have set forth. This particular ordinance needs to be approved. Let's stop the gangs. You want that corner cleaned up? Follow your rules and regulations. I put in a concern, I wait for an answer. It was big tent stamp, it's 96,043, and I definitely agree with the times that I did put this in 90. We need to move forward, folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
So I want to call your attention to a letter that I sent all of you on April 26 of this year, when we were expecting it in the beginning, and in that, in that letter, it was talking about, we have the multiple choice question, the A, B, C, D, E, whoever can remember that, but I do. But anyway, so, we were talking about some things, and I thought it's a time that, you know, to limit the machines between 16 up to 29 would be reasonable for the developer and for future developers. And I'm coming back to that because, you know, because, here we are. But I think that the developer will be satisfied with, you know, 29 machines. Like up to 29 machines would be a satisfactory number, if that's what you want to ride at. I know that the lot is small, I appreciate that a 40-plus room hotel would not be a good fit on that property. However, there are a lot of vacant lots and different things around town that could fit something like that. So, you know, I just, I just want to caution you also, you know, once you, once you create this ordinance, it's going to open it, right? So maybe when you're doing the discussions of the EAS, perhaps you can do what you guys did when you did the marijuana or the dispensary, where you tied it to a population. So where you have like a certain number of tavern licenses or available based on population. So that that way, you could kind of control it that way, just to thought. Anyway, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and just to keep everyone here, and, you know, let's, let's do some development.
Any other comments for the public hearing?
Good evening, Jisoo Boyu. We're happy here, this order is going to get redeveloped, we always wanted to redevelop. Just wanted to touch on discussions tonight, seemed the direction that the discussion's wider, based on the size of the lot, what can be built there, what cannot be built there. Just to kind of give you an understanding of the quality, it sits on 1.6 acres, 90 rooms, 90 parking spots. Prospector sits on three and a half acres. Full hotel, casino, restaurant, lounge, over 100 parking spots. So, the proposed Pine West development is on almost four acres, right? So there is plenty of room there, but it's still worth to build a hotel. And we could have a discussion about this as well. As far as the language, on not having a slot parlor, you know, they've done very well in Las Vegas, Reno circumventing the type of language that's proposed tonight, the slot parlors have. So we need to be very cautious with the language that's discussed, because if you look around at all the slot parlors, several hundred of them, they are now six hours worth of buildings with a kitchen. So we just want to make sure that in a couple of years from now, we're not flooded with 40 machine slot parlors, because we took the same mistakes that Vegas and Reno did in terms of putting in ordinances for hidden slot parlors. They're very good at figuring that out, so we just want to make sure everyone understands that. Like I said, we're happy, of course, to be developed. If they weren't going to do it, we were going to do it, and we just want to make sure moving forward that this is done correctly, clear, and we're not addressing this again in the future. But to Ann's words, you know, they're fine with 30 machines, we can definitely go with 30 machines, and they have the space and what they want to do. And if you even do 40, we'll use a brick 30 machines. So just wanted to put that into public comment on this issue, and hopefully, we can all get together and have a discussion on the best ideas for this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Any other comments for the public hearing? Hearing has stayed none, we will close the public hearing, and we will jump back to adding seven to the business. Councilman Elliott, Councilman Alwright, Discussion Only, update on per group effort on CDG practice.
Yeah, you know, this is one of those assignments that can, I don't want to report it for three years, whatever. And we need to get other council people involved in this. Ed was on with myself, but with a one night show, I invited Ed to help, because you can't make all the meetings. This is one of the ones I, I did one of the last meetings, I think we need to appoint somebody else to pick up that, because we got a new person here, we need to have a backup on that too. Ed has not done a lot of money, a lot of money, for the congressional works. So, I'll, I'll stay on with Sam, because she's got good ideas, and so does BJ and Mayor, and figure out what somebody wants to sit in on that board right there, so. I missed the last meeting, so we will sign with Ed.
Every other one?
During the day?
Yeah.
I don't see where we could change that time.
Good, yeah. There is ghost time though, too.
I don't know how much we can go, is there a DC? I would even ask. My restaurant?
We did get good news from them this week, though. Initially, our Camden project, the streets has been approved, it's now in the bill, so as soon as the bill is passed, we did get good news that our cameras throughout town, the 610,000, was also approved. So those two were approved, as soon as the bills pass, we will get that money and be able to do those two projects. So, they're waiting to hear about the water treatment plant, and also the fire department solar project. Those are the only two that we don't know about yet, but we're 20% there for us.
And then the good news that we got about our waiver letter, and that we were getting for both, those three disprojects, so that's a lot. So that means the 20% match that we would be required to on that is definitely given, that's fantastic, that was a huge amount of money.
Thank you for staying on, for the time being.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll move to item nine, Councilmember, City Building Official, Discussion for Possible Action Presentation Regarding Fence Hides and City View of Costee Determination, Plans and Options.
Good evening, I thought that was a little advanced, when I formulated this on my Commodore 64 that I have up in my office, so they're able to kind of, I had notes and everything, so I'm going to have to wait here, I don't know the same format. Basically, received a couple of complaints, and, you know, I realized that, you know, I hadn't really thought about fences for this, and I hadn't thought about the heights of fences over a lot of the communities. And I went around and realized that nobody else has thought about them for the last 25 years either, because most properties are out of the line, so every block is dozens of examples, so. I kind of took stock of what we had, and just put together a very, very short presentation for you guys. So we'll try to get this through quickly, I know it was a very long meeting. So, you know, fences serve a vital function. You know, we all know what fences are for, right? Fences, they keep the good guys in, right? They keep the bad guys out, and in this community, they keep the even madder bad guys out, right? So, the government's role in fencing is cheerleading, right? We just want to make sure that our pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, people who are driving around town, so that we can protect the things that we love very much about this community, and that's the job. We also want to make sure we have first responder access. We need our fire EMTs and our building officials to be able to access properties to, you know, do whatever permanent duties that I do for day to day. We've got different requirements in different locations. Ours, our minimum height for fencing on quarters and driveways is a little taller than most places. And the general rule is, anything over about three feet, you might as well not have one of those, because you're blocking most of the view from any sort of weaker cars, that sort of thing. Some places allow down 18 inches, which you might as well not be putting fences at that point, so.
Real quick, Craig, is there any way we could pull that out more, or is that as far as it goes? So that's what we can say?
Well, as good as we can get, it was supposed to be on the big street today, so you'll have to share it, might as well.
If anyone needs to move outward, this is great.
Many cities have exceptions for ornamental iron fences, the closed side yards, and I believe the reason for that is because you can see direct through them, so they don't pose a safety hazard. A lot of folks stay away from chain link fences above five feet, because that does restrict first responder access. If you really need to get wire hoes in between a lot of your fence again, because there's just enough room to do so. But generally speaking, about half of the locations that I researched had exceptions to these, some up to seven feet, some higher than that, I wouldn't advise that. Buildings go allows for up to seven feet fences without a permit. They don't come up with numbers arbitrarily, they've, you know, known their due diligence, and through experience, that's the number that they've come up with that people can safely build, you know, that will be able to survive disasters and or not cause any injuries to others who are in the property. Dallas, Texas, they allow fences up to nine foot tall in the rear yards, I certainly am not happy taking for that at all. That's a, that's a little bit much. So I'm going to go through a couple of, a couple of things that we have here. Fences in violation that do not pose a hazard. This fence is a little over four foot in the front yard, it probably should not be, but it doesn't block any viewpoints, it doesn't really do anything negative to the community, provides a little front yard privacy for the spokes, but it is technically in violation. There we go. Here's a seven foot tall security fence in the building that we have here in town, is in violation absolutely, it is posed a hazard, not to anyone. In fact, I would advocate that a little bit taller fence, a property that breaks the security is probably the appropriate way to go. This fence is over at the ranger station, barbed wire fences are ordinance that are required to be on top of six foot fences, six foot tall fences, and they are required to face away from the public. So technically, this is in violation, is it hazard, only if people try to break into the building. This property here has violations in the front yard, the side yard, and the corner lot, but the entire thing is chain link, so it just generally does not pose a hazard. Is it something that could be enforced on? Absolutely. Is it something we should be spending our energies doing? Probably not. Here's another one, where we have one that exceeds four foot in the front yard, 50% see-through, could be made a little better, but fine in large, again, it doesn't really pose a safety hazard. And this is the most common violation that I have in town, is these chain link fences that are above three and a half feet on corner lots. There really is no point to having that low of a fence. If we're going to have that, that requirement on, on corner lots, I think we need to specifically create rules so that we can have an amount of open space in there, so that we can see books coming around corners. Obviously, nobody wants a five foot tall wooden fence, solid fence on a corner, because then you can't see. Something like this, I mean, that doesn't harm anyone, technically, it's in violation, you know, so I think we just need to create rules that are more specific to the community, that kind of allow us a little bit more freedom and ability to kind of properly keep things out of our yard, and, you know, take into consideration the photography period. Here's another one, we don't have any gate exemptions in our ordinance. A lot of people like to do, you know, kind of fancy gates that you have their property with. Technically, this is a five, six foot tall front fence gate, it's a violation as we speak. This one's a little bit more curious, and on the sheet that I gave you guys about my recommendation, deals a lot with the site distance areas, and it also includes retaining walls for future development, because the retaining walls in this community are really kind of what block the site lines when you come around the block. This fence here should be three and a half feet, because it's on a corner lot, but if it was at three and a half feet, it wouldn't be any better or worse than being a million foot tall, because we're not, we're not providing any extra security or safety, because we've got the retaining wall. This is the most common violation we come up against, and that's going to be a six foot fence that extends all the way to the front yard. For the ordinance, you're only allowed to have a four foot fence to the point perpendicular to the front of the house. So this should be four feet all the way to the point where the house starts, but again, if we don't have the driveway, if we don't have the street, I don't necessarily cedition with it, but that's not for me to decide. This is another one, we have a corner lot that's non-compliant, but again, clearly in a safe condition, and I would argue, safer than even a lot of our compliant fences have got. So here are fences in compliance that may pose a hazard. In our own building that we're in right now, we have this in the back parking lot, and you can't see around, a lot of kids come to the park. The problem is with commercial properties, fencing ordinance is specific to required bars, and that is specific to residential properties, because there is no required yard in commercial property. So, commercial properties only have visibility requirement in residential areas. It's just kind of something for future development's sake that I would like to look at, so that we're not, you know, we're not mowing the kids down, so they're trying to drive themselves to the park, it kind of ruins the day for everyone. Here's a fence that's perfectly compliant, looks really good, it's three and a half feet tall, unfortunately, it's that downhill, so you really can't see as you're coming up that intersection, if you're just coming up the hill. You know, how big of an issue is it, really, it just kind of depends on how much traffic we give those patients, and you know, how many people move in with kids on bikes and everything else, so. I'm advocating to make this something that will need peer review, but in my opinion, you know, that 25 feet section, that very vital visibility corner, those fences should be a minimum of 50% open, 40%, 3 and a half feet, so that would be really secure. Fences outside of compliance that do pose a hazard, this, this is a very good example. This is actually right across the street from the picture of the wire fence I showed you. Absolutely, you can't see anything, it blocks the sidewalk, you're not allowed to have any, you're blocking it with a 3 and a half feet. Something like this, you know, shouldn't be vigorously enforced in order to maintain, you know, our safe roads. And that's, that's kind of the point where I'm getting at, is that we really need to focus on the life safety aspect of our ordinances, and create those that are germane to our community, and then rigidly enforce them, especially the ones that are in the critical areas. And I hate to pick on certain votes on certain laws, but, you know, with great power being in a corner lot comes great responsibility as well, so. So here is another question that arose the last couple of weeks, this is actually an electric fence somebody put up outside of their four foot fence. My suspicion is it's for the deer, so, a lot of communities allow deer fences. Typically, what a deer fence is, is kind of a temporary attachment to a conforming fence that raises its height, and it looks terrible. They're just, they're just not a good idea, and that's why I'm kind of in favor of allowing, you know, certain allowances for specifically wire fences to be a little hotter, keeping deer out is a big problem around here. People put a lot of trying efforts into their gardens, and we should be able to protect them and appreciate them. But if we don't have a specific ordinance that covers electric fences, it could be argued that our nuisance ordinance covers it, but again, it's kind of a stretch, I would like to see not only electric fences, but also razor wire fences be addressed. We don't have any prohibition whatsoever on razor wire fences, we're thinking we have these. So it's just kind of, I think it's just kind of update some of that stuff. Our fence ordinances were kind of copied and pasted and adopted about 50 plus years ago before any of this stuff even really existed, so. I think it's just kind of the time to focus on safety. This is a four foot barbed wire fence that we have, this was next to the seven foot tall fence that was non-compliant. Is it a hazard, could it be a hazard? Yes, it could be considered a hazard, it certainly is out of compliance with defense ordinance. But again, it's generally speaking only going to be a hazard for folks who are looking to get in some trouble. So, if you want to break in buildings, make sure you bring your bandages. And again, this is the retaining wall. This one technically is almost in compliance, because the shrubbery is almost less than three and a half feet tall on top of that retaining wall, but, you know, if it was in compliance, it still wouldn't be very good, so. And I'm not recommending that we run around taking down retaining walls all over town, but I think we should have something in our ordinances that are specific to those corners, to make sure that they don't get placed in that location. to make sure that they don't get placed in that location. Um, and here's another one. Uh, same situation, retaining wall with a non-conforming front yard fence, and my feeling is even if that fence was conforming, it's still not gonna be able to see around the corner with our premises, so I think it's just kind of kind of a great update. Uh, so what do we do? Uh, I think we make reasonable rules, and then we enforce those reasonable rules in addition when it comes to our life safety aspects. Uh, we can keep ignoring the problem and hope for the best. That's what we've been doing for, you know, at least the better part for years from what I can tell. Uh, we can selectively enforce based on individual complaints. You know, if somebody doesn't like their neighbor, I'll go out there and beat them up over a fence that's too much, too high, and then the law will argue they're irritated and unhappy, uh, or ask, and ask about these. Uh, I could become a Kool-Aid man, and I can just rigorously enforce all of these fences that are down, and I can just start knocking walls down. Everybody hates me, and I'll have to send my wife to the grocery store. Uh, so that's pretty much, uh, you know, my presentation on fences. I think that it should be up for consideration. Uh, please, if you can, so I would like to draft some sort of preliminary draft ordinance. Obviously, if Leo's help, if he wants me doing the math or writing one, it's... Uh, so I think, uh, if, if you allow me to kind of come back with a little bit of common sense changes of that, that have an eye on, on safety, I'll provide a little bit more for you not to feel our residents at the same time, for you to have choice, I think it's a great thing, so... I really think this is a big benefit we did done, so I ask for your permission to go ahead and do that, and that is, and my presentation today.
You know your person. I'll repeat this till seven.
I tried using proper tactics with the bar, she shoved me in.
Kevin's for that. Um, I'll entertain the motion in effect if the council so desires.
I will move to approve.
Motion from Councilwoman Elliott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any further discussion or questions? Call for the vote. On the favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Item nine, discussion possible action. Item begin to the public hearing. Item one, Councilmember City Attorney, in connection with possible action. Approval of second reading ordinance seven fifty-one, room under twenty-one, three, and two oh five. Proposed ordinance entitled three chapters by section thirteen of the city code requiring gaming license applicants who intend to operate sixteen most lock machines to have a support vehicle government and providing other matters related to them. Can you just swash, or quash? Quash, yeah. Quash. Motion to quash from Councilwoman Elliott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilwoman Elliott. Further discussion? Call for the vote. On the favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right. Welcome to the panelists. Motion to quash passes. I have a public comment. Please state your name to the record. You don't have three minutes.
Calhoun, Director of Tourism, in the spirit of keeping this entertainment going, and I thought that was one of the best presentations I've ever seen. Uh, I just wanna, uh, let the council know and invite everybody in the room here to the community, to the summer concert series that we're doing in Broadbent Park, and, uh, I want to thank Mike Craig Craft and his staff for, uh, working with us to make this four-show series go. So our next show is this Saturday, July twenty-ninth, with Jake Jacobson. Uh, the next show after that is August twelfth with Chris Kingdame, and then closing out the series, August twenty-sixth with Cal Tuckey. These are free concerts to the community. Uh, we try to have the fruit sharks down there, the cornball boards, and, uh, something that tourism has been wanting to do for the community, putting on a summer concert series for a long time. Uh, the other thing that I want to bring up is, is, um, it's been a while since I've been here, but our board did approve, uh, the seed money for the redevelopment district for the sign improvement incentive program. So I feel like, uh, it's, it's time to get together with representatives of the city council, tourism board, the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, and, and really get this thing going. And I think we've talked enough about how the downtown needs to have a little bit of a facelift, and this is a program that would provide those business owners an opportunity to do that. So, uh, those are my two updates, and I hope to see you at all of the events this weekend because we have packed ones. Thank you. Thank you.
My name's Mary Carol Eva. Last fall, the city of Ely installed a drainage pipe located on Main Street. My address is nine oh one Amity G. The drainage was installed running parallel to my property. My complaint is they removed a lot of that dirt that was stagnating in my fence. Since the removal of the dirt, my fence is now starting to come apart. I turned in a complaint on six twenty-eight twenty-three. I received a call on seven seventeen twenty-three informing me that the city has the right way that allowed the removal of this door, dirt. I also was told that they needed the dirt to help cover the pile and make it look nice. I was also told that the fence needed to have structural work done to my fence. I then requested a letter stating this decision. I picked up the letter from the main office. The letter I received and what I was told over the phone are not quite the same. The letter states the city did not interfere with my fence. My complaint is with the dirt removal, which interfered with the structural at the bottom of my fence. Since the removal of the dirt, you are now able to see light come through under the fence. I have a few of these holes. I have a post that was cemented into the ground, and now the cement has some dirt and is standing in midair. I'm requesting that the city of Ely provide me with the dirt that was removed along my fence. The ordinance states the city is allowed the first four feet for the right of way for sidewalks. My fence is fifteen feet point, fifteen feet eight inches from the edge of the street. My fence is not even with the street. It is at a slant going uphill. I received a few quotes to repair a part of my fence. The work was repaired by the maintenance managed company to at least band-aid a fence where the fence came apart. All the folks in the maintenance managed company agreed that the reason my fence is coming apart is, yes, too much dirt was removed from the fence since the dirt was supporting my fence. I have taken several pictures to show where there are now open holes along the bottom of my fence and show light coming through. Also, the light of the pole that was cemented into the dirt and is now standing in midair. Um, please respond to me in writing, and I have an open, uh, invitation. You are lucky to come to my property and look at the fence and what I am completing now. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public comment, right?
Public comment.
My name's Bill Wolf. In the past, I was pleased to work with the previous city clerk. I had great respect for his abilities and what he did. I voted for him to be on this commission. What I did not vote for was to sit in the audience and listen to him shout down the city attorney. That kind of stuff is ridiculous. Um, I also did, we all know that he quit all these different boards and commissions in a fit of anger. We invited, we, we elected him to do the city's business. And if this kind of nonsense goes on, I'm gonna be the first in line to request the city council, the city attorney, or whatever state agency is responsible, to investigate him for both misfeasance and nonfeasance. The general worth that was here in the second half of the meeting was the man I, I voted to elect. The guy who had a lot of knowledge and was willing to sit there and talk reasonably about whatever issues came before the city council. Please, I hope that man shows up more often.
Any other public comment?
Senator Oreo, in regard to the fences, nice presentation. I think you've got your work out here because Ely's a very unique town. With all the little fiddles, uh, et cetera, I don't think there's a one-fiddle answer. Uh, with retaining walls, retaining walls might be taller than what you're saying your fence should be, but you can't leave an open area up on top of your kids, uh, your dogs, and whomever else might fall over the edge. So you have to take that into consideration. We live on a corner lot. I would love to put a fence up. Three foot fence, it's not gonna do me any good. It's not gonna keep out the loose dogs. I've seen a skunk climb my neighbor's three foot fence. Um, and then I noticed all the pictures, they were great, but there wasn't one vehicle parked there. I can put in a three foot fence so that someone has visibility even though the stop sign is past the fence line. And if someone parks their motorhome or their four will drive there, their view's blocked. So maybe take that into consideration that maybe it's not the fence that's blocking the view. It could be the vehicles that are parked there. And, um, I said I would really love to put in a fence to keep out the dogs, but four foot isn't gonna be enough for us. It, it, it's not safe, so it's kind of a waste of time and money. And like I said, with the hills, it's gonna be different for each corner, and there's a lot of old buildings. Our building used to be commercial, so it's kind of laid out different, and the old fences are different. Now it's residential, so I hope we don't have to change to me because someone else changed it and didn't bother to tell us that in the past it was commercial. That's the way some things are. But anyway, I appreciate all the work you're doing and, um, look forward to the kindness project moving forward. And I think you guys are being smart to take your time to think about it and really give a good look into the future, not just for this development, but for future developments. Because it's true, most of these lots in this town need to be cleaned up. They're not big enough for big projects. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Terry Finjar, fourteen seventeen Mill Street. I did not know how to prepare my closing remarks for tonight as I was unsure if I was gonna be on the right side of your vote for proposed gaming license ordinance seven fifty-one. So that said, I'm hitting the top. Um, I'm ecstatic. You're open to moving Ely forward and allowing for growth and new business opportunities to enter. You've done an admirable job tonight in representing the best interests of both sides. While some are obviously unhappy given time, I'm confident that they will come to enjoy the new amenities which will clean up the blight on the corner of Great Basin Boulevard and beyond. I'm personally so excited to see the busy intersection get a much-needed facelift, not only for the locals, but for the tourists traveling through as well, so thank you. Um, in regards to Craig's presentation, that was great. It was very black-hearted and informative, so thank you. Uh, for Clerk Lee, she deserved not only a kudo from this board, but an unsolicited raise of one-three percent equal to treasurer trasks. She's well-deserving of this, and you guys should have made the motion to add that in the vote. Um, it was welcome to see tonight. You all worked together this evening for the betterment of the residents of the city of Ely, White Plains County, and the travelers who pass through daily. Your job as council members is not an easy one. I work hard to maintain my friendships outside the meeting hall. I realize that it's not always the case and that your job can be a thankless one. While I do not always agree with your decisions, I appreciate the time and commitment you all made serving on the council. So in closing, I would just like to say thank you for your service and trying to represent the best interests of the residents of the city of Ely. Thank you.
Good morning. I just want to say this for all of us. I don't know you, and, uh, I just want to say that we need this kind of discourse. We need this kind of, uh, thinking. Somebody has to call people out if they see shenanigans, and we all need to listen. So we, as council people or whatever, give them a chance, listen to them. He might see something you don't, you know. I'm giving him the benefit of the doubt because this is the kind of people we need on this council in this city. He asks the hard questions, and the hard, we need to give him hard answers and the truth. So if there is some kind of shenanigans going on, I don't know about, because I'm just a concerned citizen. You know, thank you very much, Mr. Alworth. And if people take him off, they take him off. Look at the way they treat him on the truck. He speaks out and not afraid of him. He's like us. So thank you so much.
Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor. General update on five hundred miles. Uh, I think everybody needs a public keep your eyes open. I, I think we've got a, a gang of stop sign thieves. These stop signs are green, and stop signs ripped off. You know, the poles aren't knocked over, and, uh, I think that was in the county park or the Duck Pond was being constructed, the county quit putting them up because they were being stolen every night. And we had one stolen down there by Dervidge's, uh, auto body thing, and there's one out there on Fourteenth Street and Thirteenth Street. And the poles aren't knocked down, you know, these little hooligans. You know, for the longest time, we can never keep, uh, High Street, the High Street signs. They were, they were once again high against, and they had a High Street sign, so... If you see some kids running around stop signs, they took them, so grabbing them. It costs a lot of money to replace them, so it's public awareness.
They are more expensive than you would think.
That's for sure. I think...
Yes. Any other public comment?
Hi, John Jones Charles. Uh, I want to make a note here. Our planning commission, uh, we were involved in the okay of the rezoning, uh, the casino and apartment complex between, uh, Great Basin and Bell Avenue. Uh, that's the only thing that we were concerned with. However, the one thing that was my concern was the fact that the regional planning for the planning commission, our concerns are, uh, affordable housing here in Ely. Uh, we did not have enough of that, and any kind of good development comes in, should bear that in mind. Uh, the particular apartment complexes, two thousand a month for a one-bedroom apartment may be okay for Park City, Utah, but not for Ely and Nevada. Uh, and I think that, that a lot more attention should be paid to that sort of situation. That if we're gonna be putting in more complexes like this, then we pitch it toward the affordability for the people up here here of Ely and Nevada. And so basically, that's my concern. We need to, about two thousand a month for a one-bedroom to start. I can see a possibility happening where that, you know, that, uh, that's put in place, but not too many takers. So it refers to federal subsidy at that point. Uh, I'd rather see somebody come in and work on a project of development so that, uh, there could be more, as I said, affordable housing for the general populace of this, of this town. Anyway, that's enough.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on July seventh, I submitted a request in regards to, uh, within the city, edition of memo, correspondence, type of citation, property owner of two ninety-five via Amity, correct code violations. That property owner, that's a being on the planning commission, you should know the fence heights. With some new construction, there are some violations of older properties, but we've sent on a planning commission, and knowing the doorhead on the project, that's blatant disregard. Closing off the sidewalk, there's nothing wrong with putting a middle access weight, but you close it off, you have to provide an access around your project. If that wasn't done, the person hadn't been on the planning commission, different story, but they know better. We're talking about fence heights. There's a picture of June seventh, a hundred and fifty feet from Mr. Alworth, approximately two hundred feet from Mr. Carson. Why don't you guys tell the supporting individual, new construction, you're up a little too high on Alvin Avenue, July twenty-fourth. Again, new construction, you have a code, you're looking under way. This particular property is, uh, belongs to my family. Picket fence, the only thing that was done there, uh, on that three and a half foot picket fence was the placement of the corner post, because my brother didn't cut it down to the four foot. He was cited. That's what starts heartbreak in this year, selective enforcement, discrimination, need to stop. Mr. Mayor, uh, I brought up the concern that I have with Jennifer Lee in connection with the sidewalk. I think officials know better than most. You can't violate the law simply because of your position in the community. Mr. Mayor, on numerous occasions, I have a question to complete. This property and individuals at the city is permitted in a lot of the park parties on the city lots and city streets, while living in them. I attempt to re-provide the commission things on a regular basis, and I'm not seeking an application. Now I have a member. I want to remind you that on June twenty-fourth, two thousand eleven, I applied for grants for my properties. I paid the fee. I was turned down, and everywhere around me, you folks are allowing RVs to go in. No permits. That's discrimination. Someone's not doing their job. If you didn't know about it, that's one thing, but when I come to you on numerous occasions, point out the discrepancies, ask you for a copy of the permits, and you don't have them, all of you have a problem. All of you are discriminating. I'm not just gonna keep sitting on my properties and, uh, sitting on my thumb while the neighbors are putting their RVs in. I haven't seen their requests. Then we just start discriminations. Starting now, Mr. Mayor.